Thank you everyone for attending the planning mission meeting. Planning mission has returned to the in-person meetings. However, we will continue to encourage remote participation and viewing of the meetings vice versa. Please know that we want to hear from you. If you're in the physical audience or more remote participating, you would like to address the mission commission. During public comment for the items of the agenda, through person, please fill out a speaker card and hand it to the staff. And if you're on zoom, you can use the raise your hand button at the bottom of the screen. If you're joining by telephone, may also address the commission during public comment by pressing nine or star nine and staff will address you. What is your turn to speak? Playing staff and call your name. If you're on zoom or the telephone, they won't mute you. Speakers will be given three minutes to speak to address their mission. Please note, anyone in attendance may only speak once per item of the agenda. This is going to have a roll call for attendance.
Two more to talk.
Here.
My chair, Dr. Richard.
Okay, great. Next, I mean, then knowing is the federal allegiance. It's all I think I've been on this one. By place of leaders, see my flag. The United States of America. To the law that which stands one nation, united in the principle of liberty and justice for all. Okay, and next on the agenda, we have approval of minutes from the February twenty first, twenty twenty three meeting.
I move to approve the minutes from February twenty first, twenty three.
Second. All right, well, we have second, can we take a roll call?
Chair.
Hi.
Richard.
Hi.
Christian.
Hi.
Christian.
Hi.
Christian. Hi. Christian.
Hi.
Roger.
For the chair, just as a point of order, we haven't been in person for so long before this kind of usually routine motion, can we just call for affirmation? Just, you know, speed up the process.
That probably mean.
Oh.
Is that.
But.
Uh, my mode of hands are good, like do we, do we need a full roll call? I know we shifted the full roll call zoom format because of, you know, the requirement for the round. But typically registered but for relatively routine motions like the minutes, can we just say?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, good to know.
Something I remember before the.
All right. Okay, moving on, next is item number five, public comments on items not on agenda. We have any comments from members of the public for any not slated tonight? Anyone on zoom or no?
Obviously on entries.
Okay, let's move on from item five onto item six. Uh, announcements of conflict and interests, anyone on the commission have a conflict or interest for any agenda items seen in the vision today? Not seeing any there either, but we're zooming on through here. Okay, uh, let's go to.
I almost asked, I didn't actually check the map, it occurs to me that the four forty four B seven, did you, did you check it?
Yes.
Yes, I checked. It could be on my right.
Yes.
Because, yes, I just realized that's pretty close to my minutes.
Yes, yeah, no, you're outside of the mark as well, so. All right, great. Okay, next, uh, it's item number seven, uh, appearing. We're going to go to item seven A, which is a request for conditional use permit to allow community facilities to operate at an existing second floor space at four 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 B San Mateo Avenue. Pursuant to section twelve point two eight zero point zero two zero point B of the San Bruno Municipal Code, Pacific Star King Lodge, the applicant and the Walsh Family Partnership owner. P twenty three dash zero zero three. This project has been determined to be category exempt per the California Fire Quality Act Guidelines Class One, Section fifteen three oh one. Existing facilities, uh, we have a presentation from staff.
Yes, we do. I excuse them.
Maybe the commission will leave their, your chairs around. The back part of the.
So please do. We need the planning mission, members of the public. Let's get started. Our public hearing has gone tonight and released proof of the property four 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 B San Mateo Avenue. The request before you is a converted of land use to allow a private community facilities to operate at the existing second floor space. Private community facilities are unconditional use, which may be permitted once a new permit is granted from the planning commission. And we'll go more in depth on the land use to the later slide. Four 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 V San Mateo is located on San Mateo Avenue between Cypress Court and Taylor Avenue. It is a five thousand square foot lot in the central business district for ZBZ so. Subject property is a two-story commercial building with three units. The main spaces on the ground board and one team space on the second floor. So we'd like to pause just to make sure I'm sharing these figures. Week second floor space is four thousand four hundred and sixteen square feet. You'll notice on this parcel map that the only property line facing the street is the front elevation on San Mateo Avenue. The subject property is landlocked on its three other sides. Existing conditions of the space include the following. Four 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 B is a second story space and its previous tenant was a travel agency that operated from May two thousand through June two thousand nineteen. Four four two on the ground board is currently a retail craft and game shop that has been in operations since August two thousand fourteen. And four four four, the second ground floor space, a children's ballet school that has been in operation since two thousand twenty one. Now looking at the rear elevation, the building does have an existing fire escape ladder for the second story, but these surrounding fences and existing trash encoder, hence the fire escape route has no circulation off of the property. Here we'll look at some photos of the subject property. We have the front elevation dating from San Mateo Avenue and the rear elevation dating from the private parking lot on Masthead Avenue. To the left of the four four B, we have four four six San Mateo and Teahouse and Capping. To the left, we have some ceiling, to the right, we have four four zero San Mateo, a single story building with several small units of retail service and office space. Properties adjacent include four four three San Mateo, it's across the street. It's an existing hair salon that the rear subject property faces two single dwelling dwellings, four three seven and four five past Academy. We're going to move on now to the proposed project details. Pursuant to San Bruno Municipal Code, section twelve point two eight, private community facilities are listed as a condition of use in the central business district zone. As listed under twelve point eight point one four seven, a community facility is still part of a public or private facility that provides eating space for public gatherings that functions as a cultural institution within the community. This term is confined even further, so looking at number two, private community facilities, which was prior to the community centers, clubs and lodges, places of worship, senior center, libraries, museums and others similar to that use since. As you apply in a present form, the applicant represents the Pacific Stars little lot. So the proposed use would fall under this definition. Now let's take a look at the existing space. As we mentioned earlier, this used to be a travel agency to the second floor, less fitted with several office spaces. The total square footage again of the space is four thousand four hundred and sixteen square feet. The proposed floor plan intends to conduct a full renovation of the space. The red outline shows the walls that will be created. And here is the more detailed list for what you tend to improve in place. A new banquet hall accommodating fifty people once a month and twenty people once a week. A new reading room accommodating twenty people once a week. Two new offices, one for a tenant and the other then to be subleased by the property owner. Two renovated restrooms. In favor, the property will provide cabinets, countertops, a microwave and a refrigerator, storage room and an elevator. Moving on to the first floor, the applicant boasts the addition of two doors instead of a second story. These additional entrances comply with California Building Code to ensure that occupancy with over two shall arrive at two points of address in event of an emergency. There are no other building sites that these two points of address can be placed, although again, the building has no other furnitures that face the street. The ultimate intent to remove the existing stairway and replace it with an elevator to accommodate the difficulty. Here is the existing elevator machine facing San Mateo Avenue. You'll notice that four 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 B has a main engine in the center of the building. In the proposed elevation, we have two additional doors on both sides of the building shown in red. There is also a proposed elevator equipment penthouse on the roof, building the same color and material as the existing building. In chapter twelve point one zero eight point one two one, this book code, we have exemptions for our review products. Minor result alterations include changes or alterations to the exterior of an existing building where no increased square footage of the building will occur, including but not limited to the addition of doors or the elimination of existing doors. With that said, this exemption applies because the project is conducting alteration at its doors, it will not result in increase of square footage for the building. Up next, we'll look at parking and we will refer to chapter twelve point one hundred, off three part of the municipal code. Under subsection B one, off the parking standards as required by this chapter shall define to be a product with any enlargement, remodel or physical alteration to an existing structure in a manner that increases the number of required off-street parking spaces. Or N E, project obtained contains to be land used, occupying a committed senior structure that increases the number of required off-street parking spaces. Subsection B two states that the off-street parking has required in sections B one is required only to accommodate the upcoming incremental change or expansion of legally established land uses. Additional parking is not required to remedy parking deficiencies existing prior to the land's change. In attachment five, goes to a staff report from nineteen eighty seven for a use permit of eight eighty seven dash three. This staff report recommended the approval of a use permit to allow the operation of the neurotic studio at four four San Mateo, four 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 San Mateo Avenue, one of the ground floor spaces. Specifically, page two, the staff report states the fault. This structure was built with no onsite parking. However, the property is a participant in the San Mateo Admiral Parking Assessment District, and according to the city's own ordinance, it is exempt from having to provide onsite parking. Thus, subsection B two applies in this scenario, and the city cannot require a project to provide additional parking to remedy parking deficiencies existing prior to the land's change. Regardless, I do want to go over the requirements in subsection B one. To determine the number of required off-street parking spaces, we'll compare the standards based on their land use. Existing land use travel agency is classified as office in which one parking space is required for three hundred square feet of the floor area. The proposed land use community facility requires one parking space per three hundred square feet of public or area. Public floor area is defined as the primary floor area open and accessible to the customers of the business. Utility rooms, storage areas, kitchen and other backer house operation areas are not considered as public or area. So in the green, I've highlighted all the areas considered public or area. And the total is three thousand sixteen square feet. And just really quickly, the remaining spaces are shown in red, which are private floor area. These are the offices, restrooms, catering preference and storage. So with this new information, let's go back to our earlier table and see how these standards apply. Knowing that the second floor space is four thousand four hundred and sixteen square feet, we'll divide that number by three hundred to determine that fifteen spaces were previously required. For the proposed project, the total public or area is three thousand and sixteen. Two and eleven spaces are now required. With eleven spaces being less than the existing required parking spaces, we can conclude that the off-street parking standards or the subsection B one do not apply. And as we mentioned before, the off-street parking standards of five and the enlargement, remodel, physical alteration or land use diversion result in increase in the number of off-street parking requirements. The parking kind of demonstrates that there will not be any increase in the number of required off-street parking spaces. Therefore, the proposed use is not subject to the off-street parking requirements, they're also not subject to paying the parking. And here is a very real view of the subject property. And every I've highlighted to you public, our legal laws serve the matters of the proposed use. And on that note, we'll wrap up this presentation with the finding of that fact. Pursuant to subsection twelve point one hundred and twelve point zero five zero, the use permit can be granted by the planning commission only if the proposed use confines the findings of that fact. The proposed development will not under observe the state of the particular case, be detrimental to health, safety, morals, comfort and general welfare persons residing or working in the neighborhood of such proposed use. After numerous conversations with our fire marshal and the building division, staff has reviewed the application against the California Building Code and determined that the project will not detriment to the health, safety and general welfare of the persons residing or working in the neighborhood. The proposed development will not be interest or detrimental to the property in improvements in neighborhood or to the general welfare of the city. The applicant is opposing a private community facility providing a space with members and will generate an increase in foot traffic in the downtown area. Further, staff finds that the apartment is available around the site and in public parking lots to serve proposed use. For free, proposed development will be consistent with the general plan. Through the San Bruno General Plan, this property is designated as Central Business District, which conditionally permits personal, business and educational and social services. Therefore, staff find that the application is consistent with this general plan. Seven recommended approval for U P two three dash zero zero three based on the finding of that fact in line three and subject to conditions of approval found in edition one. And that's all of the Saturday and we want to discuss.
Hey, thank you. First presentation is all it's raised. Let's see, uh, do you have anyone, uh, from the applicant or the architect or applicant who speaks?
Yes, we do. Yeah, we have a client. Or does the applicant or the app have a lot of this starting lodge?
Thank you, my name is Richard Campbell. I'm the elected representative of Pacific Starting Lodge. And I would like to say, uh, say more, we do have our architect here. One member is physically present, there's others leave online. We also have a representative of the owner and also the owner of the two two school, which is a tenant down below. And again, Richard, the tenants here also. So we're looking forward to this, our membership has been looking for a long-term permanent location for quite some time. For the past year, we've been renting another facility on San Mateo Avenue until a more permanent one is found. We have found all the local restaurants and other activities to be perfect for what we do, which is fellowship. Our, our vision of community engagement, we host fundraisers, youth groups. This facility would be ideal. We meet every single Monday night, sometimes formally, like last night in tuxedo, we had about thirty guys, thirty people up and down San Mateo Avenue and had a very, very good dinner locally. And, uh, other nights, just very casual, we also host other activities, on average, about once a month. It varies, and that's where the banquet hall really comes into play. And I'm here to answer any questions, anybody that, anybody might have.
I was curious whether, I mean, you anticipate renting out the space for other functions when, because if you're not using it every night of the week, it seems a shame to just have the space separately, the idle for, you know, three quarters, four pinks of the time.
Yeah, we as Pacific Starting Lodge are not focused on renting out the location, with an exception, we did build in that, uh, some lease office to offset the rent, I understand is that what you mean? But we do not plan on renting that out. I mean, we, they engage with various different use orders and whatever, and sometimes they ask if they can use a facility because we're in the business, if you will, of helping the community, we quite often donate that itself, so. I'm not sure if I answered the question.
Yeah, I mean, I like when I, the question of whether it's paid rental or donated to a scout troop or something, I'm just, I'm just curious, like, do you anticipate the space being used sort of somewhat more than just once a week?
I think the simple answer is no.
Did I understand correctly, there, there are tenants on the, on the lower floor and they realize that these renovations, they're going to be quite disruptive with, uh, new elevator, it's like maybe bearing walls changing and things like that?
Correct, there's two different tenants on the ground board. We try to minimize the destruction as much as possible, but like the report said, we really had absolutely no choice, we had to put two stairways in. We looked at every single possible option to mitigate that, but there's really, because being landlocked and that besides, we had to check.
And will they have to shut down, because I mean, you're probably looking at a second retrofit, giving what you do to the front facade, two doors, no walls at all?
Right, uh, uh, no. We looked at the infected areas and if, based on what we know for the seismic, uh, uh, thing that has to be done, give a stairway, elevator is not as much of a disruption as you might think, for instance. Uh, it would mostly impact the, the window during the construction, but the, their main entrance doesn't get impacted. And we saw no reason to shut down the business, plus, we looked at the operating business hours and days, and it would be very, uh, it worked very well with construction schedule as far as time to construction.
Okay, uh, just appear to be an elevator pit, so combination work and whatnot, so, so sure. They're aware of all that.
What, what's the location of the space that you're renting right now that you're used to for this?
We have, we are, we have been and currently at the American Leachon Hall, uh, seven by seven San Mateo Avenue, been there for, think over a year.
And what are the exact hours you anticipated on, I know, it sounds like the evening on Mondays, for what are the hours?
Uh, two question, so, um, on average, we meet every single Monday, we have dinner, so it's a six o'clock dinner. We, then we have, uh, social or some meeting afterwards, and we usually wrap it up around nine o'clock.
And yeah, about how many, about how many folks do you have in there at one time, about fifty?
No, on average, on Mondays, uh, about twenty, twenty, very rarely is it going to twenty, on, on an average Monday. Last night, we had, uh, thirty, because we had a little bit of a special night.
And everybody parks on, on San Mateo Avenue when they come to that.
But in the air, correct, everybody's kind of learned to park in the, the lot behind the building.
Either speakers on behalf of your organization or architect or anyone of your roots, not mandatory, I think that's it. Okay, thank you, thanks so much.
Have a second, Steve Park from Scott Cleveland.
Scott Cunningham, I'm one of the owners of Heretic Games, it's one of the bottom units, it's at four four two. I have some concerns about this because the stairwell is gonna greatly affect us. First, the construction, the contractors I spoke to said this is at least a year of work and it's gonna shut down the front of my store for that time. Uh, on top of that, I'm losing a hundred square feet of the front of my store, which is gonna cut realistically a third of my play space down, which is a huge deal for me. Um, so I, I mean, following building codes, two ways of egress, I'm not sure how they can get around that, but don't see how you can realistically put a stairwell on the side where I am without it severely hurting me. Any questions or comments on that?
Joe. I was just a question for staff, wondering if this is an issue between the tenant and. I mean, not, maybe out of our jurisdiction to address that issue, because we don't have any, any, any responsibility to the actual building and other relationship between the other, so I would think get washed out. Investments to be able to address that issue.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, let me, if this gentleman has leased that space from the Walsh family, I mean, we're essentially withdrawing his access to that space, but whether that seems like it would violate the. Uh, that is just a.
For sure, that's why I'm thinking that it perhaps a tenant or a discussion. And, you know, there are lots of, yeah, I have ideas, but it has to be properly to address it this time, you know, it's not restricted.
Thank you. Um, on that point, uh, was there a floor plan of the first floor on screen, I can't remember, it was just second floor. And this is on the left-hand side of the street, is that correct? If you want to go back, I can, right, to your question.
Yeah, sure.
Has there been any discussion about phasing this works in a, in a way to minimize impacts to your business, for example, it would be, or, or maybe just there were first, getting that out of the way and then letting you, I assume you have arranged your floor plan in that area, that's gonna.
Cause I would have to, yes, uh, no, there's been, no, talk to me about that, I was just presenting the plans, uh, as, as you're seeing them there, and that was all.
I see.
It was to be clear, I think we've already cleared the subject as a, as a body, we are looking at it from the respect of the general plan of the city. Am I right?
You're looking, yeah, if you're looking at it in terms of use permit.
Right.
And, and we, you know, at the staff level, of course, you're trying to make sure that if there was communication and with the tenants about this issue, uh, which seems, you know, doesn't seem quite resolved. So certainly one option for that should, yeah, well, certainly, yeah, it's, it's not beneficial for the city to approve a use permit that involves the taking of a you know, portion of the ground floor tenant's space without the tenants in sense. portion of the ground floor tenant space without the tenants' consent. You know, obviously, we have property owner consent for the applicant to move forward with their application, but this is a very unusual situation. So one, one option would be, you know, to certainly continue this, this item to your next meeting to, rather than taking it actually this evening, to make sure that any issues with tenant on the ground floor in terms of how the construction will impact that, and the ownership, you know, however that changes since lease terms would be worked out.
So as a higher level question, it sounds like there was no way to make that rear fire escape work at this point. Would there be any way to do a legal use of the upper floor without some retrofit like this? Is that it's basically like, in order, in order to have appropriate fire egress under modern code, it needs to, and access and where's no way to make it work at rear. So like, so is, is it basically like that upper floor cannot legally put back into use without a retrofit like that?
So the existing space is used as offices, so another office use can come in there.
But the, the
The change
Cause it's a handful, you know, bad fall.
Yes, it's under the building code, you're changing it to a separate portion of the building to a separately used, which has, based on the occupancy, has, has different
Stricter egress.
Egress, egress, and also PDA, that's the nature of the elevator. Uh, so, yeah, so that's those, part of, you know, the required. Okay, I take that. Uh, how long have you been in business at this location?
Uh, since 2014.
Okay, so you've been there a good while.
Yeah, we plan to stay as long as we can.
Sure.
So things are going okay for us. Not amazing, but okay.
That's, all right, yeah, I think I just echo, cause Fisher left it is. Uh, it sounds like there's negotiations or something, agreement has to happen. Landlord, uh, for, kind of, here, so that they're, Johnson said, we're on the, we're weighing in the implications for, you know, the, the use, not so much all the, the real battle or real challenge here is getting you guys to work together.
Okay.
That's happened, so, but I appreciate you speaking to me. Yeah, I'll have to check out your story.
Thanks.
Great story.
It is.
Do we have any other speakers in the audience?
No, we're sharks, and I see no hands.
Go ahead.
Come here, show it, it's still, um, oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, all right. Um, so I understand that, I'm the other co-owner of Carrotting. So I understand that the issue I would have to bring, the world of Whitney and Welsh, but hopefully, I did want to ask, how will King Star minimize disruption? Because it is very, it cannot, the, the street, it can be a little narrow, especially will take a lean. Uh, with a lot of children, there's a lot of shoulders, and it's been hard for some people to navigate, and I understand that, um, people, you know, chairs have had trouble moving around, especially when, um, there's construction going on. And I also want to hear about, um, the time of construction, because they brought up like, it won't interfere with store hours, but that's not very clear to me, like, or, you know, what those hours are.
One of the things that we have been through from half times is when the applicant produces a new class action, falls, that's nice. And so so I can think of experts, that's, um, I'm wondering, seeing, you know, that, or
Sorry, guys, I didn't see the, 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 the Have those been outlined? And some of those visions might answer the question about structure and hours, especially like one of their visions, can you?
Sure, I can read that one. Hopefully, your packets have a category one, since twelve of them, forty four. And for mission eight, since twelve.
Well, what were that?
For the city's every real newsbook content, six point zero P, when it occurs at a turn, we operate with any equipment or with any content targeting related to the project, shout out to not the noise level, and time indicated below. The times are Monday through Saturday, seven and ten PM, eighty-five decimal for maximum. Ten PM, seven AM at sixty decimals, maximum. On Sunday, ten AM, seven PM at eighty-five decimals, and seven PM, ten AM at sixty decimals.
Man, it sounds like this is largely kind of the standard condition approval, uh, for, 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 you know. I mean, I think in theory, we could have a condition approval that, you know, sort of requires more deference or attempt to cooperate with avoiding disruption to existing businesses that just sort of bear code requirements, that's, I think, it's fairly, fairly unusual, and usually that ought to be negotiated between the tenants and landlord.
Just having it sit vacant for that extensive period, I, I think I'd be happy here if I was hearing that, oh, we're gonna have more of our other lot of things, more often, whether for pay or by, okay.
Sounds to me like it's used for, it doesn't necessarily have to, I think, most of us, uh, use for, you know, public gatherings. However, it doesn't have to be, so in theory, if they change into drop space, the one exit would be, at the egress exit would be adequate. And this wouldn't be a detriment to the tenants below. Uh, whether or not that's our is, I mean, is that within our, or is that really, that's really just?
No, no, and since the offices are permitted to use, I mean, another, another person could, person, for their
I mean, if, if we rejected this, then someone there happens to pick up a lot of wants for this office, but it's, you know, like, obviously, we can't force the starting lot to use it as nearly an office.
Right, but sure, sure, it's not, first, I just, I just don't know, because there are the way that uses for the space, be, is, we did a body event to
Yeah.
Say with that, you should be doing, I mean.
Such a hard The only catch for, for you, we need to show this. So, yeah, I understand. Yeah, I believe any change clock, you have to certainly acquire, say, yeah, it's a building, it's not, because it's an assembly. If it becomes anything but an office, so changing will be required by the, um, assembly, it's been required larger or dangerous, that, that it's triple use. Yeah, I think in, in this case, it sounds like the key to a successful project is going to be the negotiation between the tenant and landlord to provide uninterrupted business to the current tenants, way to get in, especially if there's, there needs to be, uh, street barriers, sidewalk, public walk, combined destruction, and also provide a safe access to their space. I think that, that's a minimum, and that's probably something that should be taken care of, the building permit, its issue, to get all those things hammered out. Yeah, that's probably a bit more detail than what we have here.
Okay, sure. Um, after taking this all in, I'm kind of leaning towards continuing it until all parties resolve the usage of space. I mean, it's kind of like proving someone to remodel their house, or it's gonna impede on, into their next door neighbor's shop. So I think until we've resolved that, we shouldn't really move too much further forward. And I have a question, you're, you're an engineer.
I am.
Could they put fire escapes in the front of the building?
Uh, rather than go through all of this on the inside, I mean, like a tight-up fold-out or, or something, other than, than the internal stairway? I'm not sure, that's allowed anymore. Yeah, I'd be talking architect a lot that, but I would think that that possibly could be a way to get out, or adapt that. Screen formal, yeah, grab it. Yeah, that, that might not especially with the assembly space that may not provide, how to play the whole, so get people out fast enough, but Hey, uh, the other speakers on this one?
I see no hands, are you ready? Just wanted to, to turn on one more button. Uh, I was, I was coming to see a little bit more detail about how the house above the elevator was planned to be finished. Um, it kind of looks a little funny with like, just a new little box sitting on the roof. I don't know if there was gonna be a parent head plan, something to maintain the visual integrity of the building.
So, one more. So if you have a, for you, but I'm solving with any, in anticipation of this body approving, so I, well, carry forward. As far as the elevator penthouse, um, it's a little bit one-pointed, actually, all the way you see it represented on your drawing, so it's a little out of character, I said, actually, how you're gonna perceive it, because it ran out of ground floor. Your angle up, you're not gonna see it, you can see it partially across the street, maybe, because it's set back a little bit, and it's only gonna be about four or five feet high, and it's some plaster finish, and if you look at that further, we have to put in another intermediate, like a curved it or some sort of script device or something that's a little bit less noticeable. Basically, it's not plastered, but we can look into that, but yeah, I understand.
No, but it's how it is set back.
Yeah, setback, also, you have a hard time to actually see it from a one-point perspective, being on sidewalk. So again, maybe across the street, definitely not fine, and local device. And it is a core requirement, as the fire marshal, the building is assured, I guess, go through this whole process, that's why we're here.
Okay. The building has a carpet on the front side existing, or is it pure roof?
Pure roof.
Okay.
Pure roof, nothing there, but I think we have to go back and we'll probably end up going on a roof for, for exploring. Our subside, there are bits closer, just part of the basic structure of the, of the building, it's concrete block.
And you can't believe it's one roof, that would be screening?
Uh, we're, we're trying to avoid that, we're gonna put those on the ground floor, do packaging, no, no package units at this time.
Okay, so in the back of the property?
Yeah, probably at the ground level, at the pump-up source. Let's do localized.
Okay.
Try to minimize that.
Sure.
Sure.
Are you aware of the new discussion between tenant and landlord, running the concerns that were presented to you?
Um, as far as the discussions, Richard here was probably more protective, because, yeah.
Yep, so I, I don't really know of any discussions between landlord and tenants, I've been interfacing with the landlord.
If it's a value, yeah, landlord used to, or, I don't know, some sellers know.
Landlord here?
Yeah, so, Washington.
My name's Whitney, um, I'm actually the owner of the Children's Ballet School, and I'm also a Welsh, so I work for the family company. Um, I have spoken with the, the tenants next door, but just very brief, it was just a one-time conversation, and we haven't got much further than that. Um, I think that the conversation obviously needs to be had on both my behalf as the tenant, if, like, as the neighbor, and not as much the owner, as well as with the other ones, but also as the landlord with each tenant, um, because it would disrupt some of our space, and it would ultimately decrease our size of our units. Um, but again, the conversations have been very brief, and not really discussed too much, because if there wasn't gonna be the approval, there wasn't necessarily the need. So the final plans were just brought to me recently, and so I just had a very, very brief discussion with the neighbors. Um, of course, we both are concerned about the space that it would take from us. Um, it would be my waiting area where the, the parents sit, um, as well as a lot of their gaming space. Um, the one great benefit of the upstairs is they did offer to have both of us have events, or I have high-hills summer camps and stuff like that, they could be utilized upstairs. Um, so there is like some benefits that, yes, some of our space would be taken, but ultimately, there could be extra space we would be given rent-free, basically, um, so there's a lot more to be discussed as far as tenants and landlords, and, uh, I just wanted to answer that. The conversation has been very short and brief between everybody so far.
So it sounds like it, um, it is premature.
Yes.
And so would you have, uh, any opposition to have a continuance until some of that discussion takes place, is it more?
I mean, no, I don't think so. I think we just wanted to have the gentlemen present their plan to you guys and see if it was even a remote possibility, if it was just gonna be a no, that makes it pretty easy. Um, but if it is gonna, if you guys are allowing continuance, I think that gives us extra time to discuss as neighbors and tenants and landlord tenant, um, relationships.
Thank you for that clarification.
The other speakers on this agenda, I have? Okay. Do I have a commission members want to speak on any of this? Please, go three.
So I, I did have a question on kind of a higher level point. It, it looks to me like in terms of the parking, I mean, their, their group is currently operating on another part of San Mateo, I'm not sure it's mine. It does seem odd that the parking requirement for this change in use lowers the amount of parking. I find it a little bit, I'm, I'm a little skeptical that it would have fewer visits, it'd be a very different time of day, much spikier, but it, but in term, you know, I mean, if you have third people come versus, you know, five people working in an office and, and three or more customers at a time, it seems like the parking requirement associated with this use is actually a larger number of spaces at peak usage. So that seems like it may be a little bit of a glitch in our code. Now, so like, I think regardless, it's probably fine, that, I, I mean, you know, like, like the, that six PM hour, that's, you know, sort of peak time for the restaurants in the area, it's what it is, apparently, high-harking event time, does, missing a little beard that the code is written that way, and maybe that's something for you, you know, to throw on the agenda for sometime next time in years. Yeah, um, so, I get that, that's odd.
Okay, so point here, I, I was supposed to take a vote and close public commentary, and then we should discuss more, so why don't we do that now? No other speakers, uh, I'll make the motion that we close up the comment. Sorry, Ken.
Who's the second? Evan.
Hi.
I shared our options.
Hi.
Commissioner Gisela.
Hi.
Commissioner Harden.
All right.
Commissioner Johnson. I'm Commissioner Coon.
Hi.
Commissioner Levin. I, motion passes seven to zero, zero, zero.
Okay, great, now the plan, should, uh, speak freely on, uh, if any questions or comments they'd like to make on this topic.
Sure. Um, so a couple of things, I, um, I'm in favor of
So a couple of things, I I'm in favor of continuance. I I really want this to work. I I'm really interested in value that you said space as a separate way. I think many service clubs should have a space and we've been struggling for a place to be. For years, and meeting outside of San Bruno, that same issue they tried to resolve here, so I I definitely have my empathy. And also appreciate this the store. I don't, it's really cool, I walk by all the time, dog survivors, I remember you got your window broken, you came back, stayed in business. Yeah, so you, I I want to make sure that. Stay downtown, you feel respected, you value that you have a long term future there. The more that we can work these things out, where it comes back to us, I want to value that. We had another situation that's probably going to end up in mitigation because folks aren't talking to each other and working things out and it coming to us. And I think putting us in an awkward spot to adjudicate that. And I just felt like the communication that broke down in so many ways and it kept coming back to us. So I'm really going to encourage you. Dialogue with each other, work, be clear about what you need and how you can make that work for everyone and bring it back to us. So that we can figure out how to kind of. I can work for everyone, if if I can say that, and um. Secondly, I, we can talk about this continuation. Commissioner Harden, I, the party just mystified me a little bit as well. I understand the the length, the regulation, but that area of San Antonio Avenue is problematic. Double parking, when I was on traffic safety, we loaded all those results, those temporary zones. As far as, as far as I can tell, we're never enforced. Right, we 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 high vibe with each other because we thought we were doing something good. And none of them were enforced, you have to pull parking and loading films and temporary zones for hours at a time. So like, I just don't know what that's going to do on a Monday evening. When you have people like my family going to swim school. Any other people double parking, you have a strike, I see people jump out, walk around cars, that area in particular is is ahead of it. So. You know, maybe we can talk about that. That's all.
Great, thank you. Senator.
Also in favor, continuance, I'd really like to see conversation between the tenants. Make sure that. It's somewhere in the distance of what I think there's two hundred and twenty one is. A unique set of construction hours. That maybe it's through a staff that that matches. Tenants' current business activities. And then the second one is, I I forget what you call this, but it's. Construction mitigation, traffic plan, something where shows during period of construction how. How that goes taken, how how. Will not impact traffic on three. Those two things. Also, I I do feel, I I have mixed feelings about this use just in general. And it's really because it's only used once a week, I'll see our most extreme view, if you were to say this was only used once a year. One night, once a year, I would say that. Probably does not fit the intent, right? Once a week, one night, once a week, also. You know, what's it really bringing to downtown, I I don't know. So, but I would then ask. If you could open it up more often to other folks and that was bringing more folks downtown, because that's really cool. Is all for traffic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Senator, this just goes to my, I mean, the example of Alliance might be interested in renting a state, I mean, when I know that that's for pay over. I think anything that 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 the state could still, you know, agree more nights to that one, but I I really using all the guy that's fair tone by. Yeah, these types.
Good chair. I'm part of the, we're returning, so I see the other side of the face and desire of the same thing, so. So having a community space, I think it's really great opportunity. I understand being a business owner for forty five years in San Bruno. The reality is, business owner, you have. You have to take risks. And when you have people coming and out of your building. There's a risk to that, there's cost to that. So maybe it's important to recognize that. That this particular. Association. Wants to be generous and to be thoughtful, but there is that piece of it, so. As much as what we want, there are limitations and risks to have look at. And so it's important for me that I base this on what. Is best for what you're proposing. And get to better make that go. They certainly would not put my decision based upon only one one day with that. I bring that. Support decision or presentation that's good. It needs what your needs are. An opportunity for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would, I just like to echo a lot of the comments made by. So I'm finishing my kind of first instinct. During the presentation is what about the people downstairs? The stuff, that's why I was asking a question about retrofit and elevator pits, all that stuff, it's. It's going to be quite disruptive. And so I really, really hope that everyone involved works together in an honest way. And is empathetic of each other's positions and come to an arrangement that. Allows the businesses to stay open. And function as best possible if this goes forward and respects their, you know, they they have a lease, they. Weren't expecting this to happen to their business and that's and that's respected. I I'm not as concerned about the parking issue because I think. I mean, I, my understanding is this has been a vacant space for quite some time upstairs. So I think bringing any type of new traffic. To the area is good for the downtown, maybe the police department needs to stop people from double parking and whatnot. So that maybe that could be an enforcement issue, but. I'm. I was, I was downtown few, few nights ago. And it's it's pretty, pretty quiet around that time of night, I'd say at most nights. The, I was disappointed though to hear that it's it's not really being considered to rent or for the general public to use the space. But I understand, it's a, it's a club, you don't want people in your space who. You know, could possibly damage it or whatnot, so I get that, but. Again, I think, I think a continuance is probably a great idea, just. Instance and let you guys have some time to. You know, A, develop the plans maybe a little bit further along, so the tenants can understand what posing and then have those meetings and have some good faith negotiations on how to proceed forward.
I I told the staff has the bandwidth to investigate, like. Is there within our, our, between our building and and sort of. You know, planning code in terms of the aesthetics, like. Whether some accommodation had been found that would. They gave the need for the the large disruption of the stairway, like whether something like the. You know, old and fire skateboard. I don't know, but like whether they're any of our codes.
We can ask that, we can ask the builders part that question.
Yeah. I think that if if that could be answered in the next, you know, few days or a week, it would help your direction and it can be worked out, that's like it would make lawless.
Good chair, last comment.
Sure.
There's a real advantage here that we have. Where you are should be able to present that it's going to affect her as well. As an owner and also as a as a business owner there, so there's a little opportunity. Be able to challenge warranty. Better on her.
Would anyone like to make a motion? I would like to move.
Second.
Connected cars to a lot of other. Like when we come back to the point for action between. Landlord and tenants, here I got the authority, make an ass like that.
Well, I think you've made it, you've made it very clear in your comments, what we want or what you're you want before they get back to you. So. So it could be, it could be made part of the motion and choose, let's say. Continuum. To a day to say, you know, to give. An applicant an opportunity to work. With landlord, their tenants, and then also like the construction piece, the the building code piece as well.
I personally feel like it's cleared out, what would it take for?
Yeah, but, yeah, so it's, that's okay.
A specific date would be April eighteen, around, say.
Okay. And then. If you go roll ball.
Yeah, man.
Hi.
Vice Chair Johnson. Commissioner Hayes. Commissioner Harden.
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson. I'm Commissioner Coop.
I.
Commissioner Levin. I. Motion has seven zero zero zero.
Great, thank you. Okay, that is our only public hearing item for tonight, so moving on to. Item number eight, which is kind of business, I think we have something there. Staff. They last, planning permission is where the picture lasts.
Planning permission is there. At your last meeting, consider. Resolutions to. All the recommendations to the city also, the resolution can be added, the packet was one for Google. Or to to endorse the changing of the cannabis regulations. So. What you typically do in situations like this, because. The city council needs to record of your decision. The city attorney and I decided that the best course of action would be to modify the resolution. That presented to you. This for your review. So if you have any comments. Anything within the resolution, if any wording changes or. Anything we feel needs to be changed to better reflect your decision. We would welcome that. And then. So it's it's similar to a review minutes where you would just make a motion to approve the resul- resolution. As presented for with. With any changes. City would have any those changes.
Well, I was, I did review the language and it was consistent with my, the motion that was passed. That I I find, but that's it.
I don't have a copy in front of me, but I I think item six, like. I don't think I know what I was trying to say, but I don't trigger this jacket. It rests. Saying that, the memo reducing the number committed. Can't train tellers, lack discretion without eventual, that's all right, we're not proposing reducing it, right? We're both being a center. Page thirty nine, more or exactly.
So that, that's it, obviously, period. Yeah, I wasn't sure if I was reading wrong, but it felt like. A remnant or opposite of what we were saying, we're not, we're not going to do anything. So that, that would be my only suggestions, either strike that entirely or record. Say that the existing ordinance is not detrimental to me, yeah. Yeah, I think we still need, even as. It is one of the required, I think, so. Yeah, if we have the, is not an internal, but it's.
So do we make a motion or do we just?
Oh, you probably just said. So, yeah, cap, caption it, you could just say. Make motion to approve the resolution within the change by item six. Okay, if no one has any of the comments, we do a. A motion to approve. Comments with amendments item six. For the the modified revision. Second. We do handle them.
We're almost a paper.
And very much. Okay, move on, next items, I have nine items for staff. I did want to. Just make the commission aware that at your next meeting. We have a scoping session, which is. Or the environmental document that's going to be prepared for the Crestmore High School subdivision. Yeah. In. I don't know how, I guess I'll be honest with you. If information that's been presented to the city in terms of schedule of events, not only for the school. For for the planning process for the school, but also there's a parallel process going on. For the design of the soccer fields that where the city has hired calendar associates. For that effort that there are. If you, if you read or. City manager's recent newsletter, there, I believe there was a schedule on there, I can also find you a link to. To that as well, but the the time of scoping meeting was identified at six now. So I wanted to check to see if the commission had any injections. To. To meeting around six P M for the scoping session and then. Our regular meeting at seven, the scoping session will take pretty much the full hour, at least forty five minutes, not the full hour. So it would not be, you know, any wasted time. We have, well, we have the other item continued tonight, so I just want to make sure that the time is going to be acceptable for the April. So people eyeing their heads at six zero half. Thank you for.
I'm just very fortunate.
Okay. Really good stat. Oh, hey, progress for review. We do have. Yeah, our, our April. A R C meeting, we do have the two new houses, so. I'm saying you have volunteer, but we still do need volunteers for next year, so.
Still am I.
Yeah.
I don't say I, I sat in class one. With the alternative. Make sure you have that.
I I will have to get back to you, I may have a class that night, so I'm not sure, but if I don't. I I don't get there. Don't point I make classes.
There's a.
Right.
If we're, if we're down to only, if we're down to absolutely, you know, I could do it. But it would be, it would be. Flying out the day after that.
Okay. Well, I mean, we certainly can do.
So, yeah, I thought we could have one for which is two, right?
Yes, yeah.
So that two is important.
Through the chair, I thought the rules on conflict of interest. Had changed this year in regards to materiality. And so. And look, if if the changes to the. You know, to the proposed development. Family home. It's not material, we're not. The value of your home. Then you you might be a little hard to space, despite the son of that. We got to go back and get some more education.
Yeah, yeah, so the, yeah, so if you're. E D C rules, if you have, if you're within five. That a post development. And it is a, Mr. B, you're saying. There is, since it's new, new construction, there is, there is a. There is a direct conflict of interest, so you're not be able to just do that, so.
There's that, I understood that was your, and there's some inter- materiality.
Yeah, it's, right, right, so it's, no, you're, 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 you're correct, though, for other. So then there's also now thousand gradient square. So then there's also now thousand gradations where that's, that's. Ambiguous kind of situation where, uh. That's usually when we go to the city attorney to see whether. And then, you know, regarding voting on various kinds of ordinances. Uh, related to like cannabis businesses or zoning changes, that's where all. Uh, materiality. Comes, comes into play where. They're, you know, changing it in order that's not materially. Change, you know, where we're benefit you, your property per se, that's where. We typically go to the city attorney, the city attorney, like say yes, in the situation would be. So. There's a challenge, and so I appreciate that. I'll get back to you tomorrow. Okay, great, great. Thank you all. Any, any feedback on? The setup or, uh, I, I feel like we probably should request microphones.
Yeah. Yeah, get it down right here. Yeah, and it was a presentation.
Yeah, yeah.
That's just quick looking away from.
Right. Is that monitor normally functioning? It's just out tonight?
Well, it's just, it's far away.
Yeah. I'll do this.
Yeah. Here, I would scream instead of. I kind of considered logging into this, you know, just to be able to see it right in my screen.
I think we're set up in past times, is that commission movement's direction, staff's direction.
Yeah, we used to.
Audience of research, you could actually pivot to one or the other.
So, yeah, if you prefer, we could, you know, switch.
So there's a green issue.
So they have that against that wall.
Yeah.
Audience is facing.
Yeah. And so that way. That, certainly, but it's removable, okay, we'll set it up that way next time and also. I can actually see the mic.
You didn't need to have me. Anything.
Um, they, I think we were supposed to get any edits. Ninety staff.
You did always.
Great, first thing.
Drive over the, yeah, I can stack and it went well, um. I was not familiar, I guess, with training, but here is. That, that's what I think of. On the guy. Thank you. What do we want through a journey?
Oh, yeah. I don't have comments, remember, smiling comments, we're all meeting first. Meet everybody. A lot of you I have not met before. It's great to be a person. There's still other comments that I motion to be adjourned. See you next time. All this. All right. Okay, thank you.